We want to...
Lead away.
Lead away? All right, going to call to order the meeting of the Board of Selectmen. We're having a joint meeting with the school committee here Thursday, June 29th at 7:03 PM. Would you like to call your members to order?
Sure.
You want to borrow that?
At seven, what is it, or one?
Something like that.
School committee called to order.
Shall we stand to have a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, why don't we have our town administrator and superintendent lead us on, on the various topics? I don't know which one you want to do first, but...
Middle High School, football, soccer, complex.
So we're probably going to jump back and forth and share the mic at different times when one of us forgets one thing and the other one forgets something different?
Oh, maybe not. We're not going to share.
Does everybody have a copy of this?
Oh, yeah, why don't we... So what's going around right now is a copy of, from PMA. This is in addition to the monthly reports that you receive. We wanted to go ahead and put this together to just demonstrate where the project is to date, but most importantly, where we are from a standpoint of change orders. And I forgot my glasses and it's printed pretty small, but...
The important numbers down the bottom and they're the big ones.
Are they? There we go. Oh, yeah, the other big ones. No, I can't find them. Yeah, they're in there. Don't worry about it. So there's a weekly meeting that consists of the review committee that we've all talked about, and each that we go through the different change order requests and what the status is with the, with our OPM reviewing the work. We've had 59 change orders requested. Of those, 34 have been authorized. Now again, when they're authorized, that includes us actually reducing some of them down, so just because a request comes in doesn't mean that it's actually approved. And so therefore, we've rejected 18 of those. Those 18 rejections were $169,000 is what the committee has rejected as part of our review through this process. So I think what that demonstrates is that, you know, it takes an active oversight, which we have a great team that we have, our project managers, plus the group that reviews this, to reject these. Some communities just approve these, but, you know, when they come, but we've rejected those. I think the other major thing is we're about 49, 43% of the way through the project from the standpoint of a spend that we've done. And with that, we have only spent about, was it 8%?
7.9% of our contingency.
7.9% of our contingency. Most of the change orders occur in the beginning of the project, and clearly, we're way, way, way below industry standards for what's been happening so far. So again, just this project is going exceptionally well from a construction standpoint. The quality of work has been going, we're very happy with and pleased with, and again, we just have a great team that's overseeing this project. You're up.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I would add to that is just saying that I do think that PMA, our project managers, have done an outstanding job, so I'd like to recognize Chad Crin and Walter Hartley, John Pope, our team on the ground there. They've just been outstanding. And just to name the members of the technical review committee who meet on a weekly basis is Bill Harriman, John Delapascoli, Dave Seidentoff, Michael, and myself, who review all of the change orders. And that meeting happens on a weekly basis and...
And Ruby joins us every week as well.
And Ruby joins us in terms of the overall, the overall building meeting. So no, it's been, I've been very pleased with the progress on the project as a whole, the school committee, and we did, and the school building committee did a tour of the facility on June 5th, and that went really well. People were impressed with how things are going, and we're on time and under budget, so it's a great place to be.
Questions from anybody on either board? Sarah?
Yeah, I'm just curious, what kinds of things were rejected in the, in the change orders? I mean, were they like really stupid things, or were they just very expensive things? I don't know. I mean, it looks like we're saving a lot of money, but I don't know what didn't happen.
Well, I would say that most of the, most of the rejections for change orders are coming forward from CTA, the construction company. I'm not saying they're making frivolous claims, but it's really an analysis of, is that change really needed, or is the extra time that they're looking for really needed?
Oh, okay.
So through a change request, they're saying, we think we need to do this and it's going to cost X. We think it may cause a three-day delay.
Okay.
So the change, the change could also be a request for a delay.
Okay.
So it's not, I don't want people to get the impression that these change orders are leading to any kind of substantial change in the scope of the project and what's being done.
Okay.
We're maintaining the scope of the project, and some, some of the things we've done have been for, or some of the things we're reviewing sometimes are for honor betterment. And sometimes they're design flaws, there's different, different pieces that come out of it, but sometimes the changes that have been rejected are where our project managers and our architects go through it and say, no, this isn't needed, this isn't within the scope, we don't need to do this.
That's good.
Or that change isn't justified. This is under your scope, you have to do this, to the construction company. I don't know if that's a good summary of...
That makes sense, yeah, thank you.
Part of it also is sometimes there's credits that happen in this process. Because when the project gets designed, believe it or not, some of the industry trends change within six months or a year, a new product comes available, and a roofing contractor will come to and say, okay, when this was bid out, expect this, but this is a better product on the market, we can put it down faster, and it's more durable than what you had before because it wasn't available at that time, so we say, okay, let's use that. And then there's a credit that comes back to us for something like that. So that's built into this as well. So we're always constantly just trying to make, make sure we get the best product. And, and if I say it once, I'm going to keep on saying it, this is an extremely durable building. Nothing is being done to reduce costs to get, you know, a material that's weaker at all. We've got great quality that's built into this building. And where this all plays into is that we're going to be signing our new report from MSBA that certifies that this project came in at $299 a square foot. Now, why is that important? Well, one, it's important because that's the maximum that MSBA would give us, and it's the only project in a long time, multiple years, that's actually came in on budget. And, you know, we have numbers here for elementary schools going back to 2014. This building came in at 338 a square foot, and I'm going to just chronologically go forward. Another 330, 350, 457, 365, 398 is the newest one besides ours, bid out in June of 16. Ours came in at 299, and that's the, the per square foot cost that MSBA has approved. Again, the only one in recent memory that has actually came in on budget, and again, we're very proud that the building is very durable, and it's designed around meeting the education plan that all of the educators put together.
Yeah, so now going back to that concept, none of the changes are affecting the ability of the building to implement the, or live the educational plan that was developed.
Michael, when you say this about, you know, coming in on budget, the only one, you're talking relative school buildings, not because the fire station came in actually under budget, so...
Yes, I'm purely talking MSBA project for elementary schools, or any new construction. And MSBA, you know, when we started this project, well, actually, when we really started the project prior to June 2009, they were paying 275 a square foot, and that went to 2014, and I think the first number I read was 338. So the numbers have always been over what they're willing to pay. That went up in 2014 to 287. When we put our project out to bid, it was 2015 to 16, they moved it up to 299 a square foot. Now they're paying 312 a square foot. So basically, if, using the 312, or, let's use our project, 299, we all knew when we brought this in front of the boards, that we were going to be paying 100% of any dollar that went over 299. Now MSBA is paying 59.63, or 7?
67.
47.
59.47.
69.47. So 60 cents on every dollar is being paid for them for eligible cost. Now, we do have some ineligible costs because they do cap some of the landscaping and stuff like that, and the site work to 8% of the total project, but it's really, it's really a good case study on how you can actually build a quality building following an education plan, putting together the right team and the right oversight, and actually meet the MSBA targets.
Other questions? Run.
Even though they're paying 312 now, we're held at the 299 because that's what the agreement was at the time that our...
Yeah, we tried that.
Our position took place.
Right, and they have a history that, you know, once you lock in your thing, it's that point. If things go up and, over time, it'll be it.
And you believe it's the quality of our review team and the entire building committee that is the chief reason why it seems every other town has been exceeding the square foot cost, and we seem to be right on target?
Yeah, I mean, I would give, you know, we have a great design team, we have a great project manager, but what we also have and had through this process is we had a diversified building committee. And the committee was trying to look at what's the best value for the product that we need, making sure we get the educational plan. And I think you all know who was on that committee and how it was put together, and the combination of the architect, the project manager in the committee, that trifecta has helped us get to this point.
I do have one question on here. You've got, I see the actual changes contingency use. What is the potential changes contingency? Is that something that you're anticipating still coming down, or stuff you're still evaluating? It's a little red...
Yes, so on the, right, on the left side, the pie chart on the left side is total risk exposure, and it's listed at 14% at 208,658. That is, that's, that's things that are coming forward that we, that there's a potential that there could be a change order that comes with it, and that number takes into effect everything that right now is being foreseen. So there's some change orders that haven't been approved or finalized at this time, but they're projecting there could be a cost there. Doesn't mean there's going to be, because we may negotiate a different cost, possibly we could come to a determination that that change order doesn't need to occur, but that's just the PMA's projection of what they're seeing coming down the line as a possibility.
But even if we, you had to go there...
If we did all of those things...
It's still only 14%.
Right, if we did everything...
How much the total is, so...
Right, so if we did everything...
I mean, this is really good.
Everything that's on the radar right now would be that 14%.
I think the building committee, the oversight committee, you know, all the project managers, and the school committee are doing a tremendous job keeping tabs on this, and I think the town should be very pleased and very happy for the work you guys are doing, and should all be commended. Like you say, even the school committee, everybody for this project going so smoothly so far, and knock on wood.
Not that I want to identify one person, but I'll identify one person. Dave Seidentoff is, he's, he's at both sites every day. I know we're going to talk about the middle high school project because that's ongoing at this time as well. And Dave is, Dave has a tremendous amount of expertise, and both, both the project managers at the elementary school and at the middle high school rely on him for a lot of information. So Dave, Dave, as much as anyone, is on the ground daily getting input from the project managers of, at both sites, and has really done a great job managing that.
Please make sure that he is the thanks of both, assuming the school committee and, but definitely the Board of Selectmen, and please pass on to the rest of the committees our thanks for the job they're doing so far. Okay, next topic?
So we were talking about the middle high school? Can I probably talk about it? You want to? He was the last one.
So Brad, what do you want me to do?
No, you can go ahead.
Come on, Brad.
Playing the new card as long as I can.
So our update on the middle, our update on the middle high school project is also really, it's going well. Same thing, the project's on time, it's under budget right now in terms of contingency. We don't have the breakdown of reporting that we have on the elementary project, it's not as, the scope isn't as large. I think at this time, we've only approved either two or three change orders on that entire project, and they've been small. So right now, but if you go over to the building, you'll see that they've already installed several new windows. I would say maybe about 20% of the windows are in. They've done the roof over the gymnasium, they've done the roof over the cafeteria, and right now they're working on the roof over the, they've done the roof over the planetarium. They're working over the science wing on the left side of the building where it says Carver High School, so the roofing is going along well. And they got, they had a little delay over there because of rain. We had that little stretch of rain for that three weeks that held them up a little bit, but that project is, is moving along well as, as well. And, you know, we're really seeing, the roof is going to be completed by the end of the summer. The majority of the windows and doors will be by the end of the summer. Some of the windows are on back order because they're more specialized, and those windows may not be in until September, so they may not, they're probably not going to be installed until September, so we're going to have to work out a plan for installing them while school's in session.
And just to add on to that, the biggest part about that is the abatement is going to be done well before...
All, all abatement, we've done, all the windows will be out, all the windows will be abated because they did have a little bit of asbestos in them, so they'll all, but, so all the windows will be out this summer, and what we'll do is they'll put in temporary windows in the, one of those ones that they're not able to replace before school starts. Those temporary windows will have a fan in them, or they'll have some access to air outside, and outside bite, so no one's going to be, no one's going to be boarded in a room with boarded windows when school starts. And actually, the area is that, I don't know if you, if you think about the building, I don't even know how many people even realize that the building is brick, but then there's sections of the building that has metal paneling. It's the windows and the metal paneling, the frames for those windows are cut a little bit differently, and they were more of a special order for that product, and those, so those are the things that aren't going to be in. It's going to be the windows going into the metal paneling, they're just, they're not going to be here until September. But the metal paneling is the library and six classrooms. So the majority of classrooms will be done when we start school, or should be, as long as we continue on the same rate, and it will be the library spaces and a few classrooms that won't be done. And then the middle school gym, the middle school gym, they also have specialized windows that won't be in until September. But then again, that's, that, that will not affect us in terms of operation or sessions or classes when school starts. The work will happen either on weekends or after, after hours.
And all the roof units will be on the roof, installed, functioning before school starts?
Yes, the roof units, they're not taking them off, so they've decided not to remove the units. What they're doing is they, there's actually enough play in the line that they're able to lift them all. I was actually on, Dave and I were on the roof today. I was up there, browsing my expertise to the table, which is not extensive, but they were, so all the units, there's actually enough play within the lines that they're able to lift them off the roof, seal and roof underneath them, and then place them back down.
Wasn't part of the project, though, to replace all the roof units?
No, that, that, that piece ended up changing.
Okay.
Because the units that we're using, they currently don't make anymore, so we weren't able to replace them. And to replace the rooftop units, we would actually had to replace all the guts on the interior. Because they don't, the units that are, basically the units up there are old enough that they, they're not replaceable to match with the inside, so it would have been a much different scope of the project because the inside, the inside would have had to come out as well.
But are we worried about the lifespan of the, of the units as they stand now?
Yeah, that, that is going to be a concern.
Okay. I just want to, I just want to make sure people know...
But our thought, our thought process on that is, and Michael can jump in at any time, so we've talked about, you know, we're going to, we may have to go forward as we look at the Capitol Outlet each year to put aside some money to, in essence, replace those units as they go. And then when you would replace them, you'd have to replace the inside and the outside, and you'd be able to do pieces of the building at a time as it, as it goes. I think when we, when Dave and our group went out to research to see if, I forget, is it R22?
R22 gas.
The refrigerant they use is R22 gas, which units don't use that anymore, and they found, I don't know, three or two, it was a small number of units that they found that they could even purchase.
And then they went to purchase them, and they were already snapped up. I mean, this is a nationwide search for one of these.
Right, so, so that, so we're going to have, we realized that's going to be a concern going forward, and we're going to have to address that through...
And I want to say the cost estimate on redoing the hole was like 2 to 3 million?
Yeah, it was a few million dollars to...
To do everything.
Right.
But it's about 25 to 30,000 a unit, is that what we're estimating?
Right.
So we're estimating around 25,000 a unit, and we, so we, through Capitol Outlet, we may have to set aside 25, 30,000 a year and say...
How many units?
I don't know, I don't want to quote the exact number.
A rough, rough figure.
It's 24, 25.
Okay, so if we do two, if we can do, fit in the budget to do three or four a year.
So what we did is in the budget is knowing we couldn't afford all of them in the town meeting vote that just happened, we did put an earmark, I think it was 50,000ish dollars to cover two of them when we need them. And basically, what Dave's going to do is when they, you know, he's going to try to maintain them and keep them going as long as they can, but when one unit goes, then he's going to redo that whole unit. And again, that's the internal piping that has to happen. Now, there may be some technology changes that happen by the time they go that may make it more cost effective, but I think the important thing for you guys to know, all of you guys to know from a policy standpoint is, we've known this, we earmarked some money to at least cover two of them to give us a little breathing room, so if something happens, we use it. As we take down that money, we'll look to replenish that money, so we always have some money available to deal with these on an emergency basis when they go.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, one more change order on that, too, was the metal is actually going to be repainted, so it's going to have a fresh coat of paint on the metal paneling as well, and a new logo, too, up on top. I don't know if that's a spoiler, but...
Well, it's not, it's not...
It's still the Crusader, it's not a little logo, but it's going to say Carver Middle High School with the, with the actual logo on the, on the building.
You mean the town seal?
No, the Crusader.
Oh, the Crusader, oh, okay. Mr. Clark?
The, let's say a unit goes in November. Would we actively move to replace it then, or can, can you go through the rest of the school year with a unit not functioning?
Depends where the units are. A lot of them tied directly into interior rooms, so they're actually not, they're not air conditioning units, they actually are air circulation units who, that cool the air as it circulates, but those interior rooms do need to have the circulation, so the majority of them would have to be replaced at the time that it occurred.
And what, and we essentially are going to have money set aside to cover two such incidents if they happen during the school year, correct? And how long a time, do you have to shut the classrooms down while this is taking...
Each one's different depending upon how it's all configured.
Can it happen over weekend?
I don't know, weekend, but, you know, probably...
Within a few, yeah, within a few days. I mean, because I, we've had other units replaced up there, so I know when I was the principal of the building, we had the unit over the tech ed room, Tony Roto's unit went, and that was replaced. So there's actually a couple of units up there that are newer, not a lot, but there's a couple. And when that system was replaced, that had, that happened in a couple of days. I don't know the total timeframe in terms of getting the crew mobilized out there and replacing it, but the physical replacement happened a day or two.
Okay. Other questions?
I had a quick question.
Yep.
On the, on the rooftop, I'm sorry, thank you. On the rooftop units, just, let me, you guys give me a refresher here. I thought when this project went, went forward, it was to, part of it was to replace all the units on top while the roof was being done.
Yeah.
Now, was that money, was there money allotted for that? I thought there was, for, to replace all of them.
So what happened is we were focused on what MSBA would approve. MSBA will not pay for any of the rooftop units.
Right.
But they would pay for removing them while you do the roof, and then to put them back on and connect them, which is pretty much half the cost, if not more than that. So what we had decided to do as an investment is, let's just buy the unit, the labor's all covered by MSBA, and we put the new units up. The problem was, we couldn't get the units, as superintendent mentioned. So that was the plan. We had had that teed up to go forward to town meeting and through the Capitol Outlet Committee, but we found this out before town meeting.
Oh, okay.
We modified that to include the two units that I mentioned here. We were looking at $100,000 to replace all the units, and then there was some other money we needed for something else, so we came back. Just, just buy the unit.
The outside.
No, no, all of the units on the roof, if we could have found the units, we could have bought all new ones.
20, 20-some odd.
20-some, yeah, they're like less than $4,000 each, but...
It's making that distinction of just the rooftop unit versus the entire system. So, right, we could buy new rooftop units right now, they won't match with our existing system, because they don't, and, and the gas doesn't work.
You're going to get the $4,000 unit, but to actually do the whole thing with the plumbing change, we bring it up to 20, 25.
Correct, correct, per unit, correct.
Because what happens with the gas change from the R22, it's a different type of gas that goes through different type of piping, the gas isn't compatible, and even the structure, the mechanics as to how it would dissipate the air is diff, works differently on the new gas. So that's why you've got to do a complete gut per unit. And, you know, the beauty here is, you know, superintendent mentioned a lot about Dave Seigantoff, but, but this is Dave's area of expertise, which makes things a lot better for the town.
Yeah, his intention is, even if a unit goes, there might be parts that he can salvage from those units to help keep other units running.
I just, thank you for clearing that up for me because there was so much going up to town meeting, I lost track, I think.
No, and we, that's what we wanted to do, we just couldn't get the product.
Just out of curiosity, when we look at the new school and the rooftop units that will be going in over there, is anything happening in the way those are going in or what they are that is going to maybe avoid having this sort of situation?
So they're, they're complete new technology, new gas, new everything, you know, new freon type gas, so it's a totally different, different animal. But here's what I will say, is that when we were looking at, you know, the replacement of the boilers in, in the, the middle high school, obviously we have a new police station going, we've got the new school going, we have tried to get the same units where we can in each one of the buildings. It's not always easy to do, and sometimes, in one situation, we had a contractor that was trying to gouge us on the whole thing, but whatever we can do that, we want the same unit, we want people to be trained to take care of the same piece of equipment, we want to be able to have a smaller part supply so those parts can be shared back and forth. So that's the, that's the beauty of what we're going to discuss a little bit later on about the joint facilities, is that that's part of the whole mindset, too, of this whole thing. And that's also going to apply to equipment, lawn equipment and everything, trying to standardize our components, if you will, which helps in long-term maintenance.
Anything else on this topic?
Yep, and one more last thing here, the middle high school sports complex. We're having a meeting on September 19, I'm sorry, July 19th, with the committee to go over the, the, the project, and that's going to take place down at the middle high school. We're going to do a site visit of the facility, and we're bringing in an expert who knows an awful lot about turf management and turf construction, that's been recommended by Mike Hogan at Makepeace for us to talk to, and as you know, Makepeace has a soil component of their, their company. This, this group, as I've explained before, is going to look, you know, extensively at analyzing an artificial turf versus a natural turf field as part of the whole complex. So we're going to be kicking that off in July.
Anything else on this topic? All right, next.
Next topic is overview of IT consolidation and hiring of a new chief technology operator officer. So maybe we'll start with the new chief technology officer who is here, Stephen Mahoney. So Stephen, I don't know, we'll put you on the hot seat, I guess, over there, we'll put you, we'll put you over there. And I'll just talk about a little bit of the process of hiring Stephen and, and give him an opportunity to say a few words in terms about, about the transition into the position. So I believe, I believe at our last joint meeting in March, the two boards voted to move forward with the consolidation of IT services, and, oh, you have, I don't know if you had a flowchart for IT, and the flowchart for, so that's fine. And ultimately, you know, so how that integration is going to look is we've hired a, we proposed a new position of chief technology officer, and then we, under the chief technology officer would be two techs who are currently employed by the school district, Candy Barry and Brian Mahoney, and Stephen would become the leader of that group and work in coordination with our current director of curriculum instruction and technology, Meredith Cargill, to provide technology services for the, for the entire town. Process-wise, we set up an interview committee that consisted of Candy Barry, Meredith Cargill, Megala May, Mike Shaw, Eric Germain, myself, and Rue Maestis. We had a lot of outstanding candidates for the position, and after, after we went through the first round of interviews, we selected two finalists to meet with Michael and myself. Michael and I interviewed the two finalists, and we selected Stephen to come on board with us. Stephen has some outstanding experience and background. He was, he spent several years as a genius expert at Apple, so he was a Apple tech, Apple Store. And one of the things, one of the interesting things he told us through the interview process of Stephen, I'm going to, it stuck in my mind, so I'm going to, you probably didn't realize I was going to bring this piece up, but Stephen said that his store, which store did you work in?
That was in Hingham.
In the Hingham store, they were rated nationally in, in the United States as the top customer service store, and Stephen himself was actually rated as the top customer service representative in that store. And they came out to meet with him to say, what are you doing? This has become the, the top-rated customer service store within the country for all Apple stores. And then, but the interesting part of that story was, we were asking Stephen the question that we asked him, that he gave this answer to, was about the idea of, when, when, when was there a time, in essence, where you disagreed with your bosses, or challenged your bosses, and politely disagreed and challenged them? And Stephen gave this story as his example of this, and I was like, huh, I wonder where he's going with this, say, how, you know, he's being recognized as the top sale, as the top service person in the top store in the country, and they're coming to meet with him to say, how do you do this? You know, so how did you challenge your, your bosses through this process? In essence, he said that when they found, Stephen, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this a little bit, if my, I'm going off my memory here... In essence, he said that when they found, Stephen, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this a little bit, if I'm going off my memory here. Is in essence what they found was, Stephen's level of detail for customer service was so high and so strong that when everyone tried to implement that, or Stephen's concern was when everyone tried to do that, they would actually be a little too slow. And it's kind of a balance of, of those things and said, if you tried to have everyone do what I do, that would slow the process down. And slowing the process down, eventually, long-term, people would not be as happy with customer service because it would just be slower. And that was a strange conundrum for them to face because they're like, well, we want people to feel that their individual service with each person is really strong. But if everyone does that for every person, it's going to slow it down and cause problems. So he said, I would have, I would questioning having everyone use the techniques I used. I just thought that was an interesting example, but I also thought it was impressive that he was recognized as the top service person, in essence, in the country. From Apple, he moved on to Lincoln Lab, MIT Lincoln Laboratory in Lincoln, Lexington, Mass. Then he came and worked for us. He actually was a tech for us for a little over a year. He left us and went to Raytheon. At Raytheon, he was managing a large network center within, for the Raytheon Corporation. And then had the opportunity to come back to us and said, he enjoyed his experience here, but I think it ties back to that customer service piece. So what he told us through the interview process was, in his position in Raytheon, he didn't get that customer service piece. He was more managing a data center, managing a network, some ways remotely, some ways from his home, some ways in the office, but sometimes in a server room, managing a network throughout the country. But that wasn't, he wasn't supporting people on a daily basis and he missed that aspect of his job. So that's how I tie it back to the Apple piece. And that what he enjoyed about being at Apple and what he enjoyed about the time he spent in Carver was his daily interactions with people. And we, as an interview team, really felt that that was his strongest attribute. No, no mind, in my mind, totally has the ability to manage, run, oversee our network as the town of Carver. But I also think he's going to bring that unique perspective of giving us outstanding customer service in terms of serving all the town officers, from the police, the fire, to council on aging, to the library, and to, of course, the schools. So I guess with that very lengthy introduction, we welcome Stephen on as our new chief technology officer. And I just wanted to give him the opportunity to say a few words and introduce himself to the committee.
Well, thank you, Scott. I really appreciate that.
Stephen, if you could just pull the microphone closer to you.
Yes, absolutely.
We need new technology. You're always in an observation mode.
So thank you for that introduction. That was very good. I'm just here to introduce myself to everybody. For many of you, it's the first time I've met you. I've seen some folks around town before, but I'm absolutely, you know, stoked to be back onboard in Carver. This is a position I really enjoy. I love working with the people of this town. So I'm very thrilled to be back here. I'll be starting next week officially. I've been onboard for a couple of weeks now, just kind of getting started and, you know, running meetings with schools. But I'll be making my way around town with the whole team and we're going to introduce ourselves to everybody. If you ever need anything, feel free to reach out to myself. You know, I'm always happy to help out, so thank you all.
You know, in terms of the beginning piece, I think Stephen's going to be doing an assessment in terms of what are the needs. Stephen has a pretty good knowledge of the school, where the school is right now. He was involved in the process of overseeing our network on the school side. So I think in the beginning, his first charge is going to be really going to all the town offices and get a sense of what, what really do a needs assessment of, of what's needed throughout the town to bring this together to unify the system.
I don't think you have to worry about all of us running to you because Michael makes it real clear. Go through him first and he'll go down.
Hey, that's perfect by me.
So I don't know if there's any questions for Stephen or about the integration of the technology position. And ultimately, from my perspective, why I support this on the school side is that, you know, we have, we have large, we have large technology needs. We have, we have a huge base of computers we need to support. And I think Stephen brings that a great balance for us in terms of having the knowledge to set up, manage a network, but also the personality and the skills to be a doer and to be going out and servicing and fixing things. Because we need, we need a little more support on that end in terms of someone who's going to go out and do that piece as well. And I think he brings a nice combination of those two pieces together.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments? Other than welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
I had one real quick. Welcome, welcome back, I should say. Do you see yourself overhauling the town website at all? Is that, will that be part of your responsibilities or is that someone else?
Well, not overhauling. So I'm going to jump in there just real quick. I mean, right now, I think that that's part of what he needs to look at is everything going on in town. Now, the town website is, you know, we have a private service that does that, that the town spent money on putting together that system. You know, it's very similar to many towns so that whether you go from one town to the next, there is some standardization that's there. Obviously, he needs to look at everything and figure out how to move forward in a more cost-effective manner so that, you know, we have more robust system. So everything's on the table. You know, I think that the town and the school will continue to have private outsourcing for certain things. For example, E911. I mean, that's just run through a program called SEJIS. And that's what runs that. The fire department has their dispatch stuff. Some of these types of things are software. We use Softwrite right now. So, you know, those individual pieces need to run on the platform that he's going to be doing. And anytime there's a purchase of equipment or software, it needs his signature. And, you know, that's, that makes sure that everything's being looked at holistically and to make sure that, you know, we're getting the best, we're, we're being good stewards of the taxpayer dollar and getting the most out of every dollar we spend because we don't have a lot of dollars.
Right. So the, so every aspect of the town will be part of your evaluation, including the library, the computer access people over there?
Yep, absolutely. Everything in the town and the schools will be, you know, oversight through me and then through the technology department would now be town-wide as well. And one of the things we're actually looking forward to working on is hopefully using some of the municipal grant monies to work with an independent contractor for an assessment of the town needs and make sure that we're efficient where we are. And, you know, of course, that, part of that is our team as well, kind of going through. And we're actually looking forward to starting next week on meeting with folks and, you know, police, fire, EMS, town hall, the library, and just seeing where the needs are and going from there.
Great.
Thank you. You know, what's great about the summer, it's a great time to go around and do the assessment and look at all the different departments and how they're configured and what the next steps are.
Just a quick question. Can you tell me why my iPhone battery dies just when it's time to get a new phone?
That's exactly it. Time to get a new phone. They want you to spend some money.
No personal questions here, Mr. Clark. I was just curious. What was also just mentioned was some of the grant money. And for everyone's identification, I think we had made notion during the budget process and through meetings, the joint, last joint meeting we had is that the superintendent and I were applying for some additional grants for the reorganization and consolidation of our DPW facilities department and also for IT. I'm proud to say that we did get the second half of that grant. So we've got two grants that we have some flexibilities to how to use between the different programs for $100,000. So that's money that's going to be used to purchase new software, which we're going to do, facility software, we'll talk about briefly later, as well as an outside assessment to come in and take a look at stuff. And there may be some equipment and some other charges. I guess the best way to describe it is transitional or implementation charges you have when you consolidate everything together. Then a lot of that will be covered through this grant.
So logistically, it sounds like you're going to be all over the place, but where is the hub? Is that at the high school or where is the sort of center of your tech going to be?
So I'll be working with the team in the middle high school. There is an office, you know, in the elementary school as well. And Dave Sigintoff is going to be relocating to town hall, I believe. So I'll have a space up there as kind of the central hub.
At town hall?
At central office for the school.
Oh, okay, all right.
You know, in terms of the network, actually, now the network flow, the town network flows through the server room in the middle high school.
The school.
It does.
And speaking of that, with the new elementary school and with the new fire station, you know, we have a new state-of-the-art server rooms. So part of this whole analysis is now that we're networked, although we're still going to pull in fiber to the, to the fire station, is that he may come back with a recommendation to move the network, so to speak, hub, to the elementary school or to something else based upon the review. And, you know, that's again, just looking at those different assets so that we can figure out what the best functionality is.
Sounds like a change order.
I was just thinking, I was just thinking, welcome aboard. Too bad you can't enjoy the summer.
Yeah, we were going over some of the summer schedule and it's, it's going to be very busy. So not much time on the beach this year.
Well, we have several nice ponds you can just kind of watch at. Any other questions? Well, Stephen, on behalf of the.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I was just going to say, on behalf of the board of selectmen, want to welcome you aboard and looking forward to, you know, seeing this new phase of our IT finally come together. It's something we've been thinking of for a few years now, so welcome aboard and good luck.
As am I. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Now, you're welcome to stay the rest of the time or if you really want to, I mean, we really have riveting meetings here, so. But if you want to go, well, that'll be understandable too.
But they're on YouTube.
Next one is facilities. Want to talk about facilities?
Sure. So, you know, we've sort of alluded to, to, you know, the superintendent and I working on moving IT forward, which ended up, you know, moving forward quicker than we originally thought. It actually was going to be the successor to the facilities department, but due to many different reasons, we decided to accelerate that and we did. That being said, is that with a combined facilities department, which we're, we're looking at calling an operational and maintenance department, what we have been doing is we have been meeting with all of the key staff, and I'll go over those people in a second, as well as been having multiple meetings between the superintendent, myself, Dave Sigintoff, John Woods, and our finance team as well, looking at how best to go forward and where the benefits would be of this. And what we've decided to do, and we'd like the, the both boards' support tonight with this, is we feel we're in a position to actually do, if you will, a soft launch of this combined departments, moving forward on August 1st. And over the next six-plus months is we'll have a better understanding of, of working out some of the bugs that we don't anticipate anything big, that we can come back to the both boards back in the November, December, January timeframe during the budget season and then address some of the financial issues as to how do we look at consolidating budgets and where does that make sense and where does that not make sense? So as part of this soft launch, we're not talking about changing money from any different department at all. But we will be working on a new system to track what the overall cost of implementing all of the facilities and maintenance going forward. Tied into this, you've seen the presentation that we brought with our consultant, Steve Daly, that presented to the boards in the past. And we've gone forward and done some modification to that. And, you know, from a staffing standpoint, we, town meeting did approve one new position this year and that was for a facilities operator, a maintenance facility operator type position. In addition to that, we've also had one resignation of a key staff member who was the groundskeeper for the middle high school. And that position is now vacant. And, and I'm going to focus on that because I think that tells the story a little bit how you can see some of the benefits of this. That individual who's no longer here would spend the, the, the spring and the summer, he'd be out straight, trying to maintain the fields, get the fields ready, line the fields, get everything ready, run the irrigation where it was in limited sections to, to keep everything up and running. During the summer, he was also busy, but not as much as the spring and the, and the, the winter, I mean, spring and the fall. In the winter, it was less so because of obviously the conditions. But now we added our new complex coming along with the elementary school. And we add on the six new soccer fields and the two new baseball, softball fields. We add on the basketball court. We add on the different playgrounds. We add on the acres of additional grass that needs to be cut. We don't have somebody for that. There's no one in the budget right now for that and there was no way of having this person be able to, to maintain that. So we were going to hit a point, one way or the other, where we were going to have to do some modification as to how we take care of the fields and the grounds because of the new school coming online. And this is kind of giving us an opportunity to relook at how we deliver that service, that, that service of cutting the grass, lining the fields, maintaining the fertilizer and so forth. And what we have determined is that the town's probably better off with having a, a mobile grass-cutting team, if you will, that goes from field to field, to cemetery, to town hall and just keeps this big circuit going around to do the bulk grass-cutting. And they can do it in a team of two or three people where they can actually knock out a lot of acreage all at once versus just one person doing it. And then by doing that, this would allow us to have a town-wide field and ground specialist that could go back and forth between the two schools to maintain the lines, the irrigation, the fertilizer, all of those technical things and be certified in fertilizer and pesticide management to, to take that ownership, if you will, almost like a, you know, on a golf course, almost like a turf management type person. So, you know, this has evolved a little bit. We do need to go forward and hire that position. But by rethinking how we do things, there may be better ways of handling this. Having said all that, our current staff that we have to maintain our buildings and our, and our grounds and our, and our horizontal infrastructure are taxed. I mean, there's, there's very few people that are maintaining all of this asset that we have right now. And it's highly likely that after the new elementary school is built, is that we will have to look at doing some additional staff expansion to help with these new assets and then with the new police station coming online, plus whatever happens with the COA center, is that new buildings require a higher level of maintenance, have more sophisticated HVAC guts, so to speak, which requires more manpower to do. Now, you save on the energy and you save on some other things, but it does take, take some maintenance tied into that. So from that standpoint, I'm going to pass out, I'm going to just send this around. This is the structure that we're currently working towards. And just like the technology person in the top, with the superintendent and I jointly oversee that individual. What you're seeing here is on the top is that the superintendent and town administrator would jointly oversee the director and the deputy director of this operations and maintenance department. That operations and maintenance department is broken down, if you will, into three branches. Building infrastructure, water and septic, which we're in essence, we're calling the vertical infrastructure. The horizontal infrastructure is the roads, the fields, drainage, snow plowing. That's what we call in the horizontal. And then the last is the town vehicles. Now, I'm going to start with the town vehicles. With this, the buses are not included. The bus mechanic is not included in this plan at this point. We did, we didn't feel that the timing was right or did we have enough information to propose moving forward with implementing the, the bus maintenance into this plan? So this is just focused on the town vehicles, if you will. Currently, under that, we have a head mechanic and assistant mechanic. And from the school standpoint, at one point you had 1.5 mechanics. Now you're down to one. But again, that's not included in here. So all town vehicles are maintained by, by two people with the exception of, of the buses.
And that's currently the way it is right now?
That's correct. Yes. From a horizontal infrastructure, we have one, if you will, DPW foreman. We have two heavy equipment operators. I'm going to skip the fields and the ground specialist. And we have three truck driver laborers. So in essence, we have six people, one of them's a foreman, a working foreman, maintaining this entire town. That includes cutting all the grass, dealing with all of the drainage, clearing out the catch basins, doing any type of pothole or road maintenance that needs to be done. Again, not many people for the amount of miles that we have in this town. But what we, we are proposing to put in here is to, as part of this combined department, is to retitle the groundskeeper to this fields and ground specialist. So that's what you see in that box, which would be, it's a new hire, but it's a revised position. We're, we're trying to add a few more requirements to this position, again, dealing with the fertilizers and maintaining the fields across the town. So we would need to go out and hire a new person to fill this. On the left row, we have the building infrastructure and the water and septic. Currently, right now, we're looking to bring over the two maintenance people in the schools. There's one for the middle high school and there's one for the elementary school. There's one for the middle high school and there's one for the elementary school. But we're looking to reclassify this position as a building, as a build, as, actually, it's a maintenance slash operator position. So there'll be three of those positions, one for the middle high school, one for the elementary school, and this new position that was funded by Town Meeting to deal with all of the town buildings. Their focus is really to maintain the building, make sure that the ventilation works, make sure that all the filters are changed based upon what the requirements are, deal with any types of repairs tied into the building. Then below that, and for this point, we're only talking about the town side, is that we would have two general maintenance slash custodians. Well, right now, we have 2.3, and we would maintain that. Now, they're responsible for, in essence, the cleaning of the buildings, but they do do some limited maintenance work. So in essence, we're looking to have two different levels of technical expertise for our maintenance people. One level is for operations, dealing with the building infrastructure, and the other is dealing with the custodial stuff. But there may be some overlap in that. This does not include any of the school cafeteria people, I think we've said that for the last few months, I'm sorry.
Custodians.
Custodian people, and cafeteria people, and bus drivers. We'll get it all out. And, you know, that was purposely decided because the custodians in the school are part of the public safety component of the school system, particularly during fire drills or any type of other assembly-type components, and it's not something we were looking to do at this point, so again, that's not part of this. They will, where they used to report to Dave Segentoff, they will now report to the principal in each building.
They're going to report to the building principal within each building, the custodians. And then, Dave is still going to have a hand in terms of overseeing cleanliness, but they're not going to directly report to Dave on a daily basis.
He'll set up the standards and the policy that each one of them have, what the expectations are, with appropriate checklist for them to follow, but it'll be up to the principals to maintain that that happens.
Is the idea that Dave is in that director and deputy, one of the director or deputy director position, is that?
Yeah, Dave is, right now, is cited to be the director.
The director.
Yep. So we've been meeting with both Dave and John, and the intent here, and they're both in agreement with this, that we would have Dave Segentoff be the director of the department and John would be, in essence, the deputy director, but more or less they're co-directors.
Co-directors, yeah.
But with co-directors, you're always in one person that just, you know, is finally in charge, and that would be Dave. Where this helps the town too, is that, you know, currently, they're it. So if one's on vacation, you know, it's tough to get backup because no one's been cross-trained enough to maintain some of the facilities. And this way, by having Dave and John work together, and let's face it, Dave's going to more or less focus on, yes, the entire department, but focus in his area of expertise, which is facilities. John is also going to focus on the entire department, but more in his area of expertise, which is the horizontal stuff and making sure the vehicle maintenance does. So they gel real well together from their area of technical expertise into putting this team together. That same thing should be said when we have the three maintenance slash operators, is although the middle high school is a little bit different than the elementary school, which is different than the other town buildings, we're trying to, as I said before, trying to get the same components where possible, so that if somebody's out, we have coverage that can go over and check on something if somebody takes a week's vacation, whatever it may be, and that person can fill in for the other buildings. So, you know, with a small town, we have limited staff, as you see, you've got six people maintaining all the horizontal stuff in the town, and this just gives us a little bit more flexibility to efficiently run things. What's not really part of the discussion tonight, but I just want to give you a little teaser on, is equipment, is, you know, when it comes to the groundskeeping equipment, for instance, is we're looking at, again, standardizing the lawn mowers, so that we have the same size units with the same decks that can quickly be, you know, used to deal with what needs to be done around town. So we're relooking at all of our equipment to see, do we have the right equipment to efficiently and effectively allow you guys to implement your jobs? Do you have the right tools? And if we don't have the right tools, then we're going to be coming to Capitol Outlet to make sure we have the right tools for them. We may find out we've got too many of a certain tool right now because there's redundancy.
In some places, they've already identified that they have the same machines and they don't need to have two of the same machines.
Right. So that's where you're going to start to see some savings as well. And again, when I use the word savings, I'm not looking at dollars. What we have to be aware of is the town's expanding, we've got more things to take care of, we've got more buildings to take care of, so if we can be more efficient and have better tools to do it, that allows us to take care of more stuff with the same amount of money.
Nope, I think that's a pretty good summary.
This may be a little bit out of the scope, but thinking down the line as you continue to evolve, this continues to evolve, I can't help thinking that, you know, you've got Dave and John, and I think that's a great combo, and I like their positions, but it almost seems like we may have to hire at least a part-time administrative assistant-type for, and I'm sure Stephen will have a part of this, for making work orders so it's a much more efficient, putting, you know, the director and deputy director, coming up with the work orders for the various legs and keeping track of that sort of thing.
I'm glad you brought that up, dude.
Dude.
I didn't, I'm not an expert, but I stayed at a Holiday Inn Express last night.
No, and the reason why I said that is because what we've actually done as part of this grant is we purchased a more robust program called SchoolDude.
Which the schools currently use. We don't, the school doesn't use all the aspects of SchoolDude, we're going to be expanding what we're going to be using for it, but it's the current platform we use to manage all of our operations pieces, so we're just going to expand that to the town side and having Dave and John trained in the use of SchoolDude.
Oh, something else for Stephen to do then.
Yeah, and that program is going to help us manage the, you know, when we're building a new building, there's certain protocols you have to do. That gets plugged into this program, and all of a sudden, on their smartphone, they're getting a text, you know, that says, hey, next week, you've got to change this filter, and we've just ordered that filter for you, and you have six in stock. You know, things like that are going to happen to make us a little bit more efficient. I think tied into this also is when we, last year, when Town Meeting approved our procurement specialist, is that procurement special, most of the procurement in the town really comes from the DPW-type, facilities-type components. So that individual is also going to be helping with some of the staffing and some of the requirements for this. So, you know, we are thinking of that, we may need more support staff as time goes forward, but what we've done is, we've had luncheons with all of the employees that's listed here, and we went over their concerns, we went over, and we wanted their feedback of where they think we can do things better, because at the end of the day, they're the boots on the ground, we need their input, and that has evolved, and we've modified some things based upon that, and we'll continue to do that. So, you know, as we reassess this in December and January, there's going to be some tweaks to this, because it's going to be an evolution.
I think that's why we're calling it a soft launch, is that, you know, first of all, no money's being moved, so currently, for this year, there's no money being taken from the school budget, there's no money being taken from the town budget.
From the town budget.
And that, and then ultimately, it's going to give all of these employees the opportunity to work together a little bit and give us feedback on, or suggestions for what this should look like in a finalized form, and we want to take those suggestions and those ideas that they come up with, because they're going to be doing it.
James?
So, this has been a topic of discussion for several years now, and I have to say, it's very pleasing to see this idea sort of become a plan before it was sort of unattainable because there was nothing really in place. This is, nice to see this develop in this way. I guess the only question that I really had was, just to review of where these hires are, under the building infrastructure, you have three building operators, one new hire, and then down in the horizontal, you have the new hire. Are one of these, like, the position that somebody has just left?
Yeah, so what, the field and ground specialist would be the groundskeeper for the middle high school.
So that's a replacement, not really a new hire.
It's a new hire, but it's a position that currently exists.
Okay.
You know, we're redefining it a little bit, calling it a field and ground specialist, saying we want this person's expertise to be in turf management and overseeing the fields, really, the fields throughout the town, although that person might have a responsibility for the Purchase Street field as well, that they're going to make sure that the fields are in good shape.
So presently, that position is funded, that's just a?
That is a present, that is a funded, well, all the positions are funded, that position's funded, that currently is funded through the school budget.
The new is the horizontal, and that would be something that you want to put at Town Meeting next year?
No, no, the only new position that was, that's different in 2018 versus FY17
Yep.
is on the left, the one new hire for the building operator, that's the new position that was funded by Town Meeting.
Right.
So that, so everything on here is currently funded for FY18, the only thing that's new is that position.
And that position?
Now, again, we've retitled some stuff.
Yep.
But that's the only, if you will, new body that's going to be coming in.
That position's on the town, funded town side.
Right, the field and ground specialist is on the, so the positions that are currently on the school side would be Dave.
Yep.
The field and ground specialist, and two of the building operators, Smokey Howard and Ray Amor.
So we're, in essence, looking at four school employees for this. Now, one of the things that we've also been working with is with both the DPW union and the custodial union are still in the same ask-me organization, the same unions per se, but they each have different contracts. As part of this, we've been meeting with their representative and the union representatives to merge those four positions into this. So this, you know, when I say revised positions, we had a groundskeeper position in that union in the school, now we're looking to put that into this new
Consolidation.
Maintenance and operation department with this new title. The same thing is with the building, the maintenance slash operator position, is those two positions, reclassifying them. Obviously, Dave and John would still be non-union, and, you know, we're working with Dave with his contract and John as well, but there's some union stuff that's in here, and that's actually, we're having very productive conversations on that.
Other questions?
Hey, well, no.
Yeah, David?
In your
Gina, welcome.
In your discussions, you were talking about the, this new hire position, changing the name of it, maybe the job description or something, but I questioned, you were talking about all the grass that needed to be cut in different locations and everything, has the thought of bidding that out ever come in? You were talking about the spring and summer and fall being very busy, but winter, what do you do? So we got a hire, we got a person hired, where if we took a look at the cost of bidding this out to some company, local company, could maybe replace that position somewhere else that we're suffering with elsewhere? Is that a thought, or is that, have you looked at that to see the efficiency?
I think we can always look at those things, but I've got something that I think you're going to like better, is that
Do tell, do tell.
One is, it does cost you, and it costs you lunch every day. And we have brought back, with what happened down in South Carver, the state has moved back to Carver, we have a lot of support from some of our inmates that are making their transition back into society. We lost those folks for about four or five months when they all moved to Bridgewater and it was too far for them to come. Now we have an agreement with the state where they're here on a daily basis, assisting the DPW with weed whacking in the cemetery and stuff like that. In addition to that, what we started a few years ago, because of this peak period time, is, and with some of the opioid epidemic that was happening in town, is we funded several intern positions that the DPW uses during the summer to assist with cutting grass, sweeping parking lots, and doing some of that. So in essence, we're bringing in temporary help to deal with some of the peak stuff. Without all of that temporary help, you'd have grass eight inches tall around town.
And the other piece I want to add on, in terms of, and I don't know if you, I'm sorry, if you were specifically referencing the field and ground specialist, I will say that
A position, not so much.
Right, but ultimately, a high school needs to have someone who's doing that job. That's, I personally, that's not something that can be outsourced, so we've talked about this position, and their still primary role is going to be to support the middle high school complex, based on the number of games and events that occur both in the fall and the spring. Managing those fields really does come close to a full-time job. So not saying, that, obviously, we're seeing that we're looking for that person to support in other ways, but that would be, one of my big pieces in this transition was, towns, school districts that have given that position up have really regretted it, and so I'm strong advocate of we need that position to be available at the middle high school on a regular basis. So at this point, that's not something I would consider outsourcing.
I think what Mr. Robinson's getting at, he agrees for spring, summer, fall, but would there be enough stuff during the wintertime to keep that person busy?
We flex him, we have flexing ability right now in the school district where, if there's something inside, he'll help with snow plowing, he'll, there's always something.
And he goes inside, helps the custodians, but I do think the townwide, I think that that's a position during the winter, there's definitely, that position can be utilized to support townwide.
Oh, I agree, but that was, I think that was what Dave was getting at, was more the winter season, we just needed the, you know, to make sure that, you know, the guy's not going to be able to have a two or three month vacation, that, you know, there's something to keep whoever this person is busy.
Right, absolutely.
And I figured you would find something for the position to do.
Could be a goat in there.
Other questions?
I just went to that one because I know that's, from my perspective as a superintendent, that's been a big piece, and as we've gone through these discussions, there's certain things I've wanted to maintain, you know, obviously, I've been a strong component of maintaining the custodians as part of the school safety plan, that kids, good that the kids know who the custodians are during the day, I don't want to see those people changing, I think there's a real value to that, so I've been an advocate for keeping the custodians out of this agreement and on the school side solely, and same, and not that the field and ground specialist, I'm not saying that person shouldn't be part of the agreement, I'm just saying, there's a real value to having that person dedicated to maintaining the fields at the middle high school for the number of athletic events that are coming.
Oh, no, I agree completely, and the other thing is, during the winter, that's when you're spending a lot of time, there's a lot of testing that can be done on the field, to what's going to have to be done, so, you know, there are things like that that could be
Absolutely, that person can definitely be utilized townwide during those months.
I think you can all see, there's been a lot of discussions and negotiations
And I'm very happy to see that.
Coming up with the solution that works for everybody, you know, and the only thing I'll say also about the ground specialist is that each one of these positions is going to have certain priorities. And to Scott's point is, particularly during the spring and the fall, is the number one priority for that fields and ground specialist is going to make sure the athletic fields, games can happen when they're scheduled. And then if there's free time after that, which there won't be a lot in the spring and the fall, then they can do other things, but, you know, that's the way we're trying to address some of these things.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? So, I guess your gentleman, yes, Mr. Clark, I'm sorry, did see your little fingers up there.
No, I just wanted to say, I know we have, like James said, we've been talking about this for a number of years, it's nice to see the plan come together. I know that Dave and John have virtually been working together, you know, tremendously over the last few years, almost making it happen naturally. However, I do appreciate the idea that we're doing this soft opening before you're asking either board to commit to the reorganization and commit to the funding changing. That way, we're going to get six months of feedback as we formalize the procedure before we're actually being asked to fundamentally, you know, endorse the reorganization.
I believe what they're looking for tonight, though, is a, I guess a joint resolution, encouraging, giving them the permission to go forward with a soft opening.
Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we've been working on this, we've been updating you, and we'd like a vote of endorsement for us to continue working together and implementing this as laid out.
Andrew?
I had a quick question, just as a resident out of curiosity. We get updates from Dave about the water quality at the school, and I'm sure that'll up, you know, continue, but with this expanded position, will he be responsible for other areas of water use, like, did the green sand well over here?
Yep, absolutely, he will be, yep, he will be, and that's one of the benefits that are here. Now with that, this comes down to dealing with our maintenance issue, is behind town hall for the town hall complex, we put in a green sand plus filtration system to make sure the water was cleaner and take out a bunch of the manganese out of the water. Guess what, Carver has a lot of manganese. So when we're building the new elementary school, guess what? We put in a green sand plus system from the same company that's over there so that we can implement this. Guess what, we earned a consent decree from DEP for the middle high school. Guess what we're doing? We're putting in a green sand plus system for that. So we have the same system in each one of the schools to deal with the water, and one of the things that had happened is when Scott and I met with DEP during the disconsent decree, they came back and actually recommended that, in their experience, they have, because, you know, you take, for instance, Dave, Dave's a chief cook, bottle washer, does a phenomenal job, he's got 50,000 things going on at once. They feel it's better to contract out, and I think this goes to your point, Dave, the water maintenance to a contractor. Guess what, we have small water water maintenance to a contractor. Guess what? We have small water systems in town that's maintaining the North Carver Water District, who's also maintaining, maintaining what's happening behind town hall. So we're working with them to do a contract to maintain the two schools as well. So that's how that's all going to be dealt with. And then there'll be one report for that company doing it townwide, which will make DEP happy. And it frees Dave up a little bit to do stuff, but now Dave has to manage them, but he's not out there doing the sampling himself. When the town went forward and we abandoned the sewer treatment plant and moved forward with a septic plant over at the elementary school, that's also another area what frees some of Dave time, times, times up.
At, at the middle high school.
Middle high school. And, and just since we're talking about Dave, one of the things we're also doing with the recreation committee is we're doing, what's the program called?
My rec.
My rec, which will then be run, which will have the field scheduling software in there. So Dave won't be the point of contact from everybody wanting to schedule a field. I'd rather have Dave not be paid the money he's paid to answer that call rather than doing a, a technical maintenance issue on one of the buildings and overseeing that. So these are some of the things we've all been working with behind the scenes to make everything run more efficient and effective and trying to utilize people's strengths to their, to the best we can help design it to.
That's good. I was just wondering, I was just curious where, who was going to oversee that as well as this new, this new position. But thank you.
Good job.
Motion somewhere?
Yeah. Do we want to just take a joint one? So you can, what you call for the motion?
I would say, we may as well do a joint vote on it.
Yeah.
Someone's willing to make a motion?
From either board.
Want me to do it?
Sure.
No, after you. For our board?
Both boards, both. Make a motion that the Carver School Committee and the Carver Selectmen vote to approve the creation of the new Carver operational and facilities.
Maintenance Department?
Maintenance Department.
No, I didn't think we were going that far. I think this is just a soft open, going forward with the soft opening.
Okay, resolution, excuse me.
Resolution at the point.
Okay. I make a motion to
Go ahead.
I'm not getting in the middle of this. I make a motion to have the Carver School Committee and the Carver Board of Selectmen approve a resolution for a soft opening, a soft, what's the, is it opening?
Soft launch.
Soft launch of a Carver operational, operational and facilities maintenance department.
Excellent.
Second.
Excellent.
Mister Chair, I just have a question. Who is taking minutes?
That's a darn good question. We don't have
I think it's Area 57.
Catherine is.
That's all being taken by our staff. They're going to be reviewing the tape and doing it after.
Very good.
Good answer.
But we're saving Stephanie because as the newest member of the school committee, weren't you the recording secretary?
Yeah, don't do that.
So we didn't want to put, you know, put too much pressure on you.
That's okay.
So we have a motion and seconded. Any other questions or comments?
Good idea.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Genomous.
Thank you for your reference.
Definitely.
Very much. Yes. So what we wanted to do is to have a very bold in capital letters preliminary discussion on our FY19 finances.
Already?
Well, you know, we, we thought it'd be good just to, to talk about a few things before we get into our next meeting, which will be in September or October, where we'll start to actually, you know, at that point, be able to refine our document a little bit more. And I think what I'm going to do here is just kind of highlight what, what the projections look like for 2019. And then I think Brad wants to share some of his thoughts on what some of the fixed costs of the school will be based upon current contractual stuff and healthcare. And it'll give us a little bit of a flavor of where things are going to be. So for 2019, the projected growth is 1.72%, which is $567,000. And, and again, that's what's projected for next year. This year, due to some things that we did, we were able to come up with 2.2% growth. And I think, as I've told everybody before, we, we really stretched that envelope. And even in doing so, we overestimated what the state was going to be providing for their local aid, which some of the numbers that we've seen are, are a little bit lower than we projected, but we think we have ways of making that up. What that yields is when we're looking at from a school budget, we're looking at about $398,000 in new money. So that's what that yields from the school standpoint. So that's, again, what's built into the projection, following the same formulas that have been done. And, and again, we will be updating these over the summer and the early fall, but that's the look ahead. That's what's on paper today. So let's just call it $400,000 for easy math right now. So from there.
Yeah, the easy math gets gobbled up pretty quick if health insurance goes up 10%. Right now, based on health insurance, as you guys know, we finished, I think, February 1st is the date that we use, I think, now in our new policy. That did not cover what our actual health insurance costs are this year. The town set up, as you guys know, the reserve fund for any over expenditures in that line item. We know already off the bat, based on current numbers, that we're going to be at least $70,000 in the hole in that line that we'll have to use the reserve money for. So when you put that money back into our actual health insurance number and look at next year's, a 10% increase actually is, based on the enrollment numbers I have right now, is $400,000 exact. It's like 401. And that's without, again, raising tuition costs, salaries, you name it, it does not include it in that increase at all. That is solely, health insurance eats up that $400,000 increase. To go on top of that
Wait a minute, so, all right, so that's good news. We can cover our health insurance for next year. And that's it?
Yeah.
So now for the rest of the story.
That's definitely not good news.
No. Can I ask one question here on that insurance? That's based on the current GS?
GIC1.
GIC1.
And a 10% increase.
And a 10% increase, correct.
Okay, thank you.
It's important that we always talk about the assumptions because the assumptions will change as we get more information. But this is what we're basing it upon at this point.
That's why I was just trying to understand the full, what we're, everything was being based on.
And I mean, you guys know in health insurance, we could have five people pick up that we're not, we don't know about, and that's another 100 grand right there if they pick up family plans. So that number is really, it's just an estimate right now. It can change. It could drop by 100 grand. It can go up by 200. You just don't know. But for running numbers for teacher salaries in terms of a 0% COLA and only moving up steps, that number comes up to an additional 100, $178,000 for next year. And in that, there is eight staff members who are going from step nine to step 10. And that's roughly $80,000 of that 178 right there. So that is what we're looking at right now. And that, again, is with a 0% COLA. There is not a 1%, there's not a 2% built in right now. Obviously, we're in teacher negotiations next year. So we'll have a chance to review that, but.
But also doesn't take into account increase in gasoline, increase of fuel, no utility increases.
Nope. We actually may see a savings. I forget, we locked in, I think we saved roughly 10% on our electricity costs over four, I think it was
Yeah, but we got a, we got the distribution costs that were in there. What we did do is we, we did lock in a, a good long-term rate for electric cost, but distribution cost goes up. Hopefully, it'll be the same number year over year, even though we've saved a little because of the distribution. But what, you know, by doing that, we can at least forecast for the next three years what our electric cost is going to be. So that's a good thing.
Now, and the key is, like, we have so many variables coming on board now with the new school. Really, we, yeah, you could guess that this is what the conception is going to be, but you don't know until the building's operating. So we're hopeful that with a lower price, maybe it'll offset that increased volume a little bit to stabilize the actual
You have other commodities you have to deal with, you know, what's going to happen with petroleum, and it has been going up slightly lately.
And I'll say, the biggest elephant in the room honestly is the charter school issue. That could have a huge impact on us right now. Again, with, I forget the, it's in Plymouth, what's the name of it? Oak?
Rising Tide.
Rising, no, a new one.
There's a new one coming up.
Oh, the new one?
It's, it's not the MAP Academy.
MAP Academy, yes, correct. Depending on how many students we have go there, that could absolutely devastate our budget.
But I want to be cautious on that. I mean, the reality is that the nature and the type of that school, we're not going to see 30 students enroll there. I think we're going to see a small, there will be a, a handful of Carver students who will enroll in that academy. And we're going to have to deal with the state in terms of their projections because how the state projects it is they just divide it up equally amongst the towns of Plymouth, Carver and Wareham, which is, and based on their total enrollment, which I believe is 120. So they were assessing us at 40, Plymouth at 40 and Wareham at 40. So that's just an issue we're going to have to deal. We're not, we're not going to have 40 students attend MAP Academy next year.
But even if we have five
Plymouth has five times as many people as we do. Why would they
Because the way, the way the charter's established, the communities the charter supports are Wareham, Carver and Plymouth.
DOR has done that with every new charter school. If you're a residing town, they are just splitting the assessment.
Splitting equally, yeah.
Makes no sense.
Right.
And they've, they've agreed to that.
That is ridiculous.
Something from the state not making sense.
They, they, they reconfigured the number
They reconfigured, they, they, they eventually check real enrollment, but your initial assessment is based upon that
An even split.
An even split.
Number of supporting towns divided equally.
And, and the first, the first year, you get fully reimbursed for that. So they're going to assess us at 40.
You get reassessed if your threshold is above what you paid total charter schools already. So we're kind of in an interesting situation where I think we have 10 or 11 kids at Rising Tide that are graduating next year. So if that's the case, we actually won't see any increase in eight. Because even though we're, we're losing 11, let's just say 11, we're gaining 11. So that threshold stays the same. There's actually no new money given to us. So that's
But there's also no loss of money.
No, you, you wouldn't gain. Because right now, if you add on students, you get the additional funds for that threshold if you hit the cap. If we don't hit that cap, we're still liable.
Oh, I, I see what you're saying.
But we're going to, we're going to have to address that issue.
When it comes, yeah, it's just, but it's nothing
But I don't want anybody to walk away from, I wasn't trying to be disrespectful, Brad. I don't want, like, people walk away with the feeling that all of a sudden we were going to be assessed for 40 students and that was going to devastate our budget next year.
No, and it won't be 40, but even 10 has a significant impact on us. I mean, everyone has a significant
What is the cost per student roughly?
I, I don't know what the exact, that program is, but I know like Rising Tide, for example, is 13,000-ish. And after the first year, we've been getting back about 3,000 per student on that.
And this, this program that's being set up in Plymouth, you know, serves a, a big need, the, the Carver School District needs as well. I mean, it's, it's focused on, because it's being supported by the, the superintendents in the, in the surrounding towns, to focus on a, a particular, you know, clientele that, that would best be educated in that type of a situation. So, you know, in that charter school, it's actually a good thing.
Yeah, that, I, I actually support the creation of that charter on some level because the, their charter is based on students who could use an alternative setting in terms of education that's really work-based. So these students are going to be in work programs, they're going to be put into internships into community in electrical, automotive. Students who may not be able to, really, who they're making a statement, I cannot do a full day in school. So this is going to be a really modified program that's a few hours of education and work-based.
And
A type, a type of program that we're not currently offering within our school system. We have an internship program, but I would not say it's a work-based program where, at that level. But again, our number of students who are going to really benefit from that program and choose that as an option is going to be, is going to be limited. It's going to be a small number of kids who it's a real need for.
Yeah. And financially, it may hurt, but at the same time, on the opposite end, it saves a student who may drop out, which affects our accountability status and a whole other mess of issues. So that's one area that you
I, I'm just surprised that they're identifying themselves as being able to support 120 students. So, so A, they're not, I would be absolutely shocked if MAP Academy had 120 students enrolled next year. And B, there won't be 40 of them from Carver.
But basically, bottom line, what you're saying is, we're all, and when I say, oh, I'm not saying the school committee and you got, I mean, every, all of us here are going to have to get real darn creative. Because I know I, for one, do not want to go, have to go before the town and say, we have to lay up a policeman, three teachers, anything. So we're going to have to really work together to come up with some way to, you know, and again, this is just all preliminary stuff. I realize that. And I want to thank you, Brad, for ruining my summer, but that's all right. But we're going to have
I think as a school committee, that's kind of why we wanted to bring this up now and start looking at this now. Because we, we're building a school with two music rooms and we only have one music teacher right now. And if we look at the projections moving forward where we're at right now, who knows what we're going to have if we don't figure out a way to make some changes to what's going on.
Yep.
So what we're doing has done really well to put us where we're at, in a place where we've, we've progressed greatly from where we were. But we have a lot of work to do as far as to get to where we need to be because we're not there.
Yep.
And the schools can't take another hit like they took this year and do, be able to do the jobs that they're expected to do in the position that they're in. There's just no way.
And I don't think the parents would allow us to do that.
And, and I hope they, I hope they don't, Al, that's right.
Nor should they.
And I hope they don't. But I, I really think to your point, it's going to take some, because no matter what we negotiate, it's not going to fix the problem. It's irrelevant to that, really. There are some things that need to be done, but those are more long-term fixes that are going to help in, in the big picture. I think we need to figure out a way to revise what we're doing now to make it a little more stable. Because I don't think the schools are going to be, you know, we're building the wrong way when we're building that way.
Yep. Well, I agree completely.
So it's going to take some creative thought. Brad, I had one question. You, just, I was writing down somewhere you were talking about, and you said the 107 for eight people moving up to step 10. Is that for this year?
So for FY19.
For FY19, so that will be 19. So
19, yep.
Because I thought you said next year, but so you're referring to 19.
19. For FY19, total for just steps is $178,000. Of that, eight of that, eight movements that we have are from step nine to step 10, which is roughly $10,000.
A big jump, yeah, yeah.
But that's included in the 178. That's not a separate number.
Yep.
Right. But now you're talking, you know, if, if insurance is, is estimated, going to go up around 10 anyway, and, and you're talking 398, round it to 4K for, for the schools for next year. We're already well below anything that's going to get us to where we need
You're already 178,000.
Minimal, minimal.
Yeah, minimal, yeah.
Oh, no.
And that's assuming a 0% COLA.
And that's assuming a 0% COLA, exactly.
So I mean, just from, just from healthcare and COLAs, looking at that, you're $175,000 is a delta 175.
Right.
Now, I mean, let's, let's, let's talk about some good news, though, all right? And, you know, last year, with the two years of not making the changes the previous year, you had a 1 point plus million, you know, 1.2 million dollar deficit. Then in essence, because changes didn't happen in 15 or in 16, then you compounded those over to 17 and, and exacerbated the thing. But again, that's over a million dollars. Now it's 175. And the point of that is that you guys, the school committee took some real tough choices to restructure your budget so that you can become more affordable within the revenue that's coming into the town. Yes, we still have more work to do to figure out how we can generate some more revenue. And Scott, I, Brad and, and Meg will be making recommendations over that over the summer. So when we come back to you in, in the fall, you know, we'll have some ways of trying to reduce this, this number down. Having said all that, what I'm going to pass out right now is the latest outlook that just came in from the state.
Oh, you're just full of good news.
Well, you know, we, we have to talk about this. Whether we like to or not, and the state just passed a continuing resolution to fund the budget for one month versus 12.
Thank you.
And part of that is, as you read this article, a couple of points that I want to call out is they're projecting for FY17, the year we're finishing up right now, is that that's going to be $440 million lower than what they anticipated. Now, again, they have to wait for the June receipts to come in. But when you have the legislature and the governor agreeing to do a one-month extend, extension, obviously, they all know there's a deficit, whether it's 440 or 300 or 600. They know there's a deficit there. But looking in the next year, you've got 750 million, up to $1 billion of reduced revenue coming to the state. Now, this article talks about, okay, well, let's not reduce local receipts, which includes general government funding in Chapter 70 and all of the special education reimbursements. And that's what the MMA is, is arguing. But in reality, the state's going to have to balance its budget as well. Yes, there's the millionaire tax Yes, there's the millionaire tax that's floating around, and we'll see what happens with that. But we all just have to have, you know, a reality check that this is the, the economic situation our state's in. The other night, um, the Board of Selectmen voted to move forward with the GIC three plan, and we're going to be pushing that, uh, forward to the state. That does have some economic savings to the town. That may reduce down the four hundred thousand dollars that Brad recommended. Obviously, that creates some, some, um, internal staffing issues that we have to deal with. Uh, but these are the tough choices that all of you need to be aware of, that Scott and I and Brad and Meg deal with on a daily basis. Um, are there resolutions? We're going to find them, uh, but it's not going to be easy, and tough choices will have to continue to be made.
And the only thing I would add on to that is the thing that I talk about all the time, which I know everyone here is fully aware of. You know, we, we as a town, not just the school, but the school as well, cannot maintain on one-point-seven-two percent growth. So somehow, we have to find a way for that to change. Um, I don't know how that is. I think the Board of Selectmen is working on some things to try to improve that, but a one-point-seven-two percent growth projection is not enough. Is just not enough.
It's not enough.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Clerk?
Uh, just again, on an optimistic note, uh, we are working toward, um, you know, you want to talk science of potential relief, the, uh, urban renewal project in North Carver. It's not going to help next year or the year after, but hopefully, in four or five years, it may be, uh, a significant, uh, source of additional, uh, revenue in the town that will help address this issue. And I, you know, we need to find a way to get from there to here. Uh, and I did read an article in the Wall Street Journal that said that, uh, many citizens and most corporations have held off, uh, doing a lot of their tax filing in anticipation that there's going to be a national, uh, tax, uh, program, fundamental change in, in taxation. And so they're actually predicting that, well, it won't help us perhaps next year, that actually you may see extra monies flowing in. Tax, tax revenues exceed what should be anticipated because they finally get around to making the investments that they put off now because they thought they might save something by waiting.
No, and I agree. And, you know, as much of a beating as the board has taken and the RDA took on getting that UPR, uh, approved, it is one of the few chances the town has, and so that's why I think we all took it as, you know, it's, it's the best chance we have of getting a better tax base, because if the residents of town can't keep getting it better and, you know, more taxes, and if, even if they do, we're still looking at one-point-seven percent growth. And we cannot do it. We can't do it as a town, on the municipal side, and you most certainly cannot do it on the school department side. And so that's why, yes, I put my full backing and support into that urban renewal project, and if it, you know, I get castrated by it, and, you know, people, you know, really want to beat me up for doing that for the wrong reason, I'm sorry. I did it for the right reason for the town of Carver, because we need that development. This town has to have more development, because I think it's been painfully made clear with that budget projection of only one-point-seven, where the school budget can only go up four hundred thousand, and it's taken, when you have something, it's taken up by insurance, and then plus steps. Now, let's face it, everybody deserves a raise. Teachers deserve a raise. Custodians, bus drivers, people working in Town Hall, DPW, but the money has to come from somewhere. And at one point, if the way insurance is going up, which is really killing us, you know, we have to, you know, we need to find that new revenue. And I agree with Mr. Neef one-hundred percent. The town needs revenue, but the only place to come up with that is to get some industrial in an area that we've been wanting to have industrial development for over twenty-five years, so.
So again, I think that's a great discussion for our long-term future, but I think right now, we really need to keep our focus on right now, because that's not a solution for right now. And that tough decision-making process that we have to make for that FY nineteen budget can include cuts to the school. There's absolutely no way, because it's already below where it should be. And, and it was, there were very difficult decisions made this year to, to make what we were available, what we had, work. And, and I think that Mr. Neef and everybody in the school did a fantastic job trying to find the least invasive way to make that happen, but it can't happen again. There has to be a different solution, because there's no way we can go lower than where we are right now. Those tough decisions have to be other than staff, in one way or another, however they're made.
And I think one thing that's going to help us, though, is we now have a command structure at the top of the town and the school that are working together. I mean, it's showing how well they're working together, and that's, you know, and that has to carry down to us as, the individual boards to work together. I agree with you, you know, that new development's not going to help us this year or next, but so we have to get through at least the next two years. And that's where the short term comes in. And we're going to have to sharpen pencils and make some hard decisions, but they can't be, I agree with you, um, I'm not, you know, the, the, the staffing took the big hit, you know, took the hit last year, and I agree with you, I don't think the staffing can take a hit again on the school side. I really don't. And we're going to have to come up with somewhat something else.
I think in the context of that, we were talking earlier tonight, being up here, that, you know, initially, this, this whole thing was decided because of that, that lack of communication that was between the two boards. And we did this as a very informal setting in the beginning downstairs, and, and I think the cooperation, the collaboration, the progress we made is proof that we're upstairs, we're on TV, they're here every night, we're televising this. It's, it's, it's a different process than its origins. And I think that's a great sign, because we are moving in that, in that right direction. So I think as long as we keep on that track, I think everybody in this town is showing. Mike, I, I mean, around the whole town, I think the, the, the decision-making process to, has improved so many things around here and the way things have gone and the collaboration that's happened. But I think that really has to continue over the next two, three years until we can stabilize to where we're at a, a much better place. But I think it is, I think, I agree, Alan, it's definitely a sign of progress, that, that this, this communication and what we've been doing and the way that you two are working together has definitely moved us forward from where we were several months ago. So thank you very much, both of you.
Any other comments on this cheery subject?
I have a question.
Yep. Go right ahead, take the microphone.
This is an overview, Brad. Can you explain, just, um, for the people out there, you mentioned about the charter school, uh, losing students to charter schools. So the average, average loss is thirteen thousand per student. Now, we had the ballot question that went through, and you heard things on both sides and claims on both sides, you didn't know what to believe. But, um, so the average is about thirteen, but you said we get about three thousand back from the state?
Yeah.
Because there was, there was saying that we were going to get, we were getting fully funded, but it was only for the first year.
Exactly. The, the, the reimbursement mechanism, it's a nice, beautiful chart that says you get a hundred percent back the first year for the new student. Then you get eighty percent. Then you get six, this is the old chart, it was eighty, sixty, forty, and then zero if they went to charter schools after four years. Since Governor, uh, I think Governor Patrick changed it, it was a hundred, and then twenty-four, two or three years after that, if it's fully funded. That's the key to everything. It's never been fully funded. It's, they barely afford the first year a hundred percent. Um, and that's only, again, if you hit that threshold. Um, our Carvers now is, I, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head, I don't have the numbers on me, but let's just say it's five hundred thousand dollars is what we lose off the bat for. Mike, you may have that on your actual sheet. Do you have the charter school assessment?
And there's on there.
Charter tuition, six hundred thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars in FY eighteen.
Yep. So that is now the bar. So unless we get assessed an amount over that, that will be...
That's the estimate, that's not the real number.
That, that's the, that's the projection last year, that's not the real number yet, but I don't think we get the real number till July. But, yeah, but it's close, it's close.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's close. It's in the, it's in that ballpark.
We don't get anything.
Exactly.
So in other words, it's a six hundred thousand dollar hit.
Correct.
For us getting nothing.
You only get, you only get the minimum three thousand, which is the facility aid.
Yeah, we, it's not that we don't get anything. So we do get some of that money reimbursed, I don't know if that number is on yet.
Compared to what we're chelling out, not much.
Exactly.
It is.
How many, how many students do we have going?
Thirty-eight was our last number.
And I, I think it's forty next, the actual number's forty.
To all charter schools. They're projecting.
Yeah.
One of the things we talked about at many different meetings was actually reaching out to families that decided to send their kids to charter schools and kind of do a little investigation on why, and maybe try to draw families back and kids back, and or maybe kind of stop people from wanting to leave in the first place.
I will say, though, after this, but you have one bubble year. This is the big bubble you're coming out of.
I see, right now, next year's senior class has eleven students at charter schools. Uh, so that should help us. We, for whatever reason, and I don't know the answer to that question of why that class has eleven kids, so of our thirty-eight, eleven of them are in one grade, and there are seniors next year. So the next year, they won't be, they won't be going to charter school anymore, because they're going to graduate. Now we have to see how this MAP Academy thing plays out. Uh, but in, in, in theory, there's a possibility that our actual, our real charter number will actually be lower for FY nineteen than it is for FY eighteen. But we have to see how the assessment piece plays.
Exactly.
At this point in time, I wouldn't want to count on that one.
Right.
That's kind of a...
Scott's the optimist.
I am, I am always the optimist. Uh, well, because the, the reality is, eleven is, uh, more than twenty-five percent of our charter school students are in one grade, and they're going to graduate. So if we, even if we pick up a few more, I, we haven't had another year where we've picked up eleven. So I'd be surprised if we picked up eleven going into FY nineteen. But we'll see.
That was the old line.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
May I ask a question?
You most certainly may.
Scott, what's the ratio of dropout students we have if we're thinking MAP is going to take...
Oh, our, no, our dropout percentage has been below, it's been stable around two percent. We've had several years it's been below two percent, where it's been one-point-eight, one-point-six, uh, percent. Um, so it's averaging, uh, you know, in total, four or five students a, a year.
Okay, thank you.
Which is really well for the area, I believe, compared, comparatively.
Yeah.
Do you think that this new program, the, I mean, the, the new charter school would help those specific kids?
It, it, well, it varies. I mean, some of those students, students drop out for a wide variety of reasons. Um, and it isn't, it isn't always, uh, academic performance. But there are some of those, there is a small percentage of those students who I think would benefit from, and I think there's students who are in our school who graduate, who I think actually would benefit from a work-based program, what they're presenting. Uh, it's, so I, I think there is some, so they're really, they're, what they're proposing is truly an alternative, and in my mind, it's the purpose of charter schools. I would argue that, now, not, not everyone would agree with me, but I would argue that I don't know how different, uh, certain charter schools are from public education in terms of what they really offer. This really is offering an alternative type of education in terms of doing that real work-based, uh, you know, life skills component, uh, where they're going to, they're going to have people do the core academics, the basic activities they really need, but really it's going to be about job coaches, getting on to, getting into, getting into the employment area and working, really working full-time while they're earning, while they support them in earning their diploma.
Which, to your point in supporting that, Scott, there's a strong need for that out there. So there really is. So this, I mean, although it's going to draw from us, it's a very positive thing from a student perspective for, for students with that need.
And you can't lose sight of what the needs of the students are.
Yeah, and in my, in my support of that program, I mean, ultimately, they still could have received the charter even if I didn't support it. Uh, I would have had the opportunity to go to the State House and speak against the school going forward and how the impacts would have on the community of Carver. And I just felt, um, I couldn't do that, I didn't feel like it was the right thing to do. Uh, so in general, obviously, I opposed the expansion of the charter school cap and all those things, but in this particular, specific incidence of what that school was offering, uh, I did make a decision to not oppose the formation of the school.
Is there a certain age that these kids go into that?
Yeah, they're looking, they're looking for high, they're looking for high school students. They're looking at students, I would assume. I, I haven't read, I haven't read the charter in full, I'm assuming it's going to be the fifteen and older or sixteen and older.
Is this a role...
So they're not going to be pulling, they're not going to be pulling, uh, students out of the elementary school or the middle school.
Is this a role that the VOTEC, Old Colony could, could have filled, or, or do they have a, do they have a co-op program there? I think they do, don't they?
They do, but it's different. The reality is that the Old Colony vocational program has very stringent requirements in regards to admittance. Uh, they have a, it's based on academic performance, discipline, and attendance. Uh, they have a point valued system, uh, and sometimes students who maybe would benefit from a, a experience at Old Colony, uh, don't make the points, and it's become more competitive. Uh, so vocational schools in the last fifteen, ten years, really, have become much more competitive, uh, in terms of the students who want to go to the vocational schools. Uh, so a lot of our students who go there are academically successful, and maybe some of our students who are struggling more academically don't get accepted into Old Colony.
I mean, I think Carver being in Old Colony is a great asset that we offer the residents. And I went to a VOTEC school, you know, but look at me. Um, but I, I think it's great that we offer it, I was just curious about that. Like you said, I think if kids aren't kind of falling through the cracks, if this, if this school helped them, I think that's good.
Do they have a delayed start time, too? Do they have like a staggered...
Yeah, I think that, I think that whole, it is a true, like I said, it's truly, they're truly offering an alternative type of education, that I think that the impacts for us long-term will be minimal.
Anything else?
If I could, um, you know, again, we went through some things on a really high level tonight, just to give you what we're looking at for next year. And, you know, again, on paper, we're looking at a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar deficit. That's, that's ten percent of what you dealt with this past year, but it's still a deficit. And what we'll continue to do, between Scott and myself, Brad and Meg, is, you know, we'll, we'll go through this chart, we will come back with something that we all agree with, because we'll spend the days going through it, and, you know, hopefully, there'll be some things that we can modify, uh, going forward to help, uh, reduce that one-seventy-five down. And again, that one-seventy-five, you know, may grow after some more work is done, because it doesn't include any special ed or charters we've all talked about. But the point to take home is, you've made the tough decisions this past year that we're going into, that's reduced that down to, in essence, we're starting with a ten percent issue compared to last year. That's not a bad way to start. It's still a problem, but overall, it's, you know, it, it's not draconian, I think is a word that was used in the past.
Question, do we, did you have to tap into the, uh, special ed reserve fund this